We can begin.
Recording in progress.
Please join for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to your republic, the world, the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence for our fallen servicemen and women. Thank you. All right, we're going to begin this evening. The Board of Assessment Review held grievance night on February 20th, 2024, and determined that many grievance failed to provide any information or provided insufficient information to permit the board to make proper determinations that their assessments were illegal, erroneous, or unequal. The meeting was adjourned until March 7th, 2024, to allow those grievance who did not supply relevant information and opportunity to do so if they chose. The following grievance are not entitled to any reductions in their assessments. Property owner William Farrington, 72 Huntington Road, Maria Baltadakis, 1 Linden Street, Genevieve Young, 36 Brompton Road, Paul and Teresa Pereguta, 9 New Market Road, Peter Sirone, 195 Sackville Road. Do I have a motion to find that the aforesaid applicants have provided insufficient information for the Board of Review to make a determination that such assessments are illegal, erroneous, or unequal? And therefore pursuant to Section 525 2A of the real property tax law, the aforesaid applicants are not entitled to any reduction of their assessments.
I make that motion.
Trustee Chester makes the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I now call on counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. At the grievance night hearing on February 20th, 2024, there were submissions that were made that would allow the board to find that certain grievance were provided sufficient information to permit the board to make proper determinations that their assessments were illegal, erroneous, or unequal. The following grievance have provided sufficient information to support the reduction in their assessments. They are Jamie and Matthew Presser, 196 Brixton Road, with an assessment reduction of $1,544. Nailan Fernando to Maria Lane, an assessment reduction of $720. Maria Perez to 15 Nassau Boulevard, an assessment reduction of $1,360. And Yvette Crichtney, 248 New Hyde Park Road, an assessment reduction of $525.
Do I have a motion to find the aforesaid applicants have provided sufficient information and that the board has determined that the aforesaid grievance night grievances are hereby granted and that their assessments be reduced in the aforesaid amounts for the 2024-2025 assessment role subject to agreement of the applicants?
I make that motion.
Trustee Chester makes the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passed unanimously. Do I have a motion to close this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, and the meeting is adjourned at 7:35 PM. Right, we'll move on to our regular agenda. And we'll begin with the quick resident comments, no more than one minute each, limited to a total of 30 minutes. And as I've explained before, this is for residents who are unable to stay for the meeting and would like to just tell us something quickly before they have to depart. So if there's anyone in the room who's unable to stay for the meeting but wanted to give a quick resident comment of up to one minute, they can come to the podium and make that comment now. All right, there being none, are there any residents on Zoom who are unable to stay on the Zoom meeting and would like to make a quick resident comment? All right, there being none, we'll move on to comments from department heads, beginning with Mr. Baroni.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. DPW will be covering seven items on the agenda this evening. I'd like to direct your attention to, on the public works. Item number eight is a request to approve a change order in the amount of $34,224 to Philip Ross Industries to disinfect the air stripping towers at Wells 10 and 11. When the filters were removed and broken down to complete the work on this project, it was discovered that the filter media, these little plastic baseball-sized parts, were covered with iron rust. This change order is for the cleaning and disinfection of this media. Item number 11, I'm sorry, item number eight, nine, whoops, is a request to transfer $211,450 and to engage H2M to assist the village with its continued lead monitoring program for the 2024 calendar year. The tasks are all related to health department mandates and BOT/EAB programs. This includes lead sampling for residents, both coordination and follow-up, lead-in copper mandated reporting, corrosion control sampling, and health department reporting, GIS tracking of lead service line identification program for EPA compliance, poster and postcard program, including all the coordination and collection of the data. Item number 10 is a request to approve a proposal in the amount of $15,000 submitted by Evolution Piping Corp to provide a full set of construction plans and specifications for the purpose of bidding and constructing a new or retrofitted automatic fire sprinkler system at the DPW garage. An initial walkthrough of the project prior to receiving the proposals for design indicated that all the existing fire sprinkler heads, approximately 390 of them, are outdated and are not code compliant. The alarm check valve needs to be replaced as the gaskets and valves are discontinued. And the main shut-off needs to be replaced along with the new flow switch and tamper switch. This is an existing capital project and funds are available in the capital account. Item number 11 is a request to approve a change order in the amount of $83,000 to Philip Ross Industries to complete the permanent orthophosphate treatment installation at Hilton Avenue Plant, which is Wells 15 and 16. This change order is to add permanent orthophosphate to this AOP project location, which is health department mandated. A temporary installation was done at this site because it, I'm sorry, temporary installation was never done at this site because it was not ready for it when the AOP upgrades were being built. The bond resolution for this project will be addressed as part of item 14. Item number 12 is for two water penalty credits. 106 Arthur Street, the resident is requesting reimbursement for several years of penalties for not allowing the village to access to replace an outdated meter. The resident has furnished a letter of medical hardship. Suggested amount is $1,250. However, the board may consider the full amount of $5,900, as outlined by Mr. Swazi. 145 Whitehall Boulevard, a resident is requesting a credit of $40.12 due to a documented mail forward issue. Under award of bids, item 13 is a request to renew the bid for an additional year with real supply for our cold water meters. Meters are ordered on an as-needed basis and are used to get water usage readings for all residents for the purposes of billing. Item number 14 is a request to approve a bond resolution totaling $700,000 for both the previously stated orthophosphate project under item 11 and to award the bid for permanent orthophosphate treatment at all well sites in the amount of $482,500 to Philip Ross Industries. This is for the mandated health department corrosion control tied to lead service lines. Implementation of the orthophosphate treatment was originally installed as a temporary measure, and this project seeks to construct the treatment in a permanent matter. The funding is subject to a permissive referendum, and the resolution will take effect 30 days after its adoption. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Looks like H2M is going to be busy for a while.
Yes, sir, for the full calendar year 2024.
We can use them. In terms of 14, so Philip Ross was actually more competitive than H2M on that particular project?
Philip Ross is the contractor who will be installing the permanent orthophosphate treatment, and H2M is the designer.
I have a question. I know the, anyone who came to the meeting saw the posters. We're looking for help from residents in identifying the lead service lines in the village. Posters you've probably seen, everyone got a postcard. And I know within a week, we had a terrific response. I think 450 residents took the time. It just takes a minute to do. They looked at the line bringing water into their home. They took a picture and they uploaded it. I know some of those residents were asking for some help, which the village is helping with. Do we have, and I didn't prepare you for this, do we know what the number is now? And if not, if we get that, I think it's probably a good idea tomorrow to go out again with what the number is and another encouraging post to get people. It's really very important for the village that we get this information. And the best way to get it is for residents to upload those pictures. So any update on that?
I don't have an exact number, but we're approximately at 500 responses in, you know, about two weeks of time.
All right, so I think we got a very robust initial response. And maybe it's, we'll put out another, another reminder with that number to get more people.
Absolutely.
To help, thank you.
Superintendent, I want to thank you and Commissioner Jackson for handling the residents' request for the movement of the speed radar sign on the south side of First Street. The two of you handled that really quickly and really well. And I think it is in a better location now at the entry to the village on Cherry Valley as it turns into First Street. So thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baroni. Ms. Wu.
Good evening. Item number one on the agenda is to set the date for the public hearing on the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2425. As you know, everyone has been working on the tentative budget. You received your budget books today. And we will hold our first budget presentation meeting next Thursday. So everyone is welcome to attend to that. Item number two is the correction of errors. The assessor has requested that the board authorize the reduction in the assessed value of a property located at 236 Stewart Avenue due to a devastating fire that occurred last April of 2023. The current assessment is $18,900, and he's recommending that the assessed value be reduced to $12,600. The documentation from the assessor is also attached.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just do have one question, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Wu, could you just comment on 14 and how that's going to be funded and when it's going to be funded?
Yes, item 14 is the bond resolution for the orthophosphate corrosion control project that Mr. Baroni just spoke about. The bond resolution has been established at $700,000 to allow enough funding to award the project as well as item number, I believe, 11 on the agenda as well, for $83,000. And as you know, we issue bond resolutions for a slightly higher amount in the event there are change orders. But when we go out to issue the bond, which most likely will be next February, we will only issue the bond for the amount of the total cost, of the actual cost of the project. So right now, the work will be prefunded by the water fund. And then next February, when we go out to issue bonds, we will issue for the exact amount that's needed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Mr. Givinelli.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The building department does not have anything on the formal agenda this evening, but I just want to give the board a recap of the work performance for the month of February. For the month of February, the building department has issued 85 permits, has performed 177 inspections, addressed 18 complaints, and collected a revenue of $265,000 for the month of February. Just another update, quick update for the Edgemere Firehouse. The, the design architect and the structural engineer is going to have a coordination meeting tomorrow at 10:30 over at the firehouse to discuss scheduling and work performance as far as giving us an update. So that's going to take place tomorrow at 10:30.
Okay, I'd like to be there, so 10:30 at?
30, Firehouse, yes.
Okay.
And that's all I have this evening. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Givinelli. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has one item on the agenda this evening. It is number seven. It is request for a change order for tree removal and stump grinding to Looks Great Services and Honey and Station for the grinding of one additional stump at $350. I am also very happy to announce that on Friday, we are notified by the National Arbor Day Foundation that we have been awarded Tree City USA for the year of 2023. This is our 33rd year getting such an honor. And it's a credit to the village that they have that long streak, and it reflects our commitment to our tree management program and says a lot about the importance of trees in this village. And to add to that, as you know, Mayor, next Tuesday night at the EAB meeting, our new arborist, Joe Yamanna, and I will be there to discuss trees and whatever else comes up. That's all I have this evening.
That's good.
Thank you. So great work on Tree USA. And I'm sensing a lot of excitement throughout the village on our new arborist being on board and looking forward to next Tuesday night. And just to remind everyone, it is Tuesday night because of another meeting Wednesday night. So Tuesday night will be the night to meet the new arborist at 8:00 PM, and it should be a great evening. And thank you for, for finding him, hiring him, and coming on Tuesday. Thanks.
I just had one quick question. Mr. Blake, when, when will the team start to get the fields ready for softball, baseball, lacrosse, et cetera, et cetera?
We have already started. They were out this, earlier this week, lining off some of the fields at St. Paul's. And we have permits going out. I think the starting date for the permits is Saturday, the 16th. We had a couple of meetings this week with lacrosse and soccer to divvy up the field space that we have. GCAA was in our office yesterday with their request. Everything will be ready to go in time for the start of the season.
Excellent. And then how about St. Paul's and the quadrating, for lack of a better, the section, section you've been doing to, to bring the grass back?
We have one session closed. As you know, it's approximately a third of the field. And we are going to keep that closed until the fall. We want to give it a full year to grow. We will be meeting with a couple of people from the EAB tomorrow and then again at Tuesday night. We're going to look to possibly change direction and use a little pre-emergent control on the crabgrass over there. The organics program is working well, and we are getting good growth. But the crabgrass is just out of control, and we have to take some steps to try to eradicate it so that the good turf that's coming in has the room and the nutrients to grow. So the field is coming in nicely. I was there on Sunday, walking around, tossing a group of non-residents off the field.
Excuse me.
And I went and walked the entire perimeter of that fenced area, and we're starting to see some really good grass growth.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work on that and to Mike Sullivan. I know he's been working closely with you and coordinating this with the EAB. So thank you.
I'd like to give a shout out to our partner, Alternative Earth Care, who's our organic turf specialist. They've come through with a couple of nice suggestions and some good options for us that I think will be well-received.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Blake. And Commissioner, Commissioner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees. Inspector Nysel sitting in for Commissioner Jackson. He's upstate at a chief's meeting. Just one item on the agenda. It's board authorization is requested for two of our officers, both are in the traffic unit, to travel to Bolton Landing. They're going to attend a two-day law enforcement traffic safety conference. The cost of the trip should not exceed $1,500. I'm able to take any questions if you have any? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. The fire department has nothing on the formal agenda. However, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention the report of alarms for the month of February. The department responded to a total of 116 alarms. Eighty-one were signal aids, automatic alarms, cover manac set calls. We had 30 generals. Luckily, most of them occurred at the same time, on February 7th, when we had that electrical issue in the Delphi section of town. One extrication call and four mutual aids to surrounding departments. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
You had a mutual aid at Floral Park last night, did I hear correctly?
Correct. Floral Park had a house fire yesterday. We responded with one of our ladder trucks, and we're back in town within a half hour or so.
Major house fire, I mean, or just, no?
Sounds weird to say routine house fire. Nothing major, just unfortunate circumstance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the formal agenda or on the, except that there's a public hearing. I don't know if you want any comment on that. Is public?
You can comment on that now, sure.
All right, it's a public hearing to establish, to pass a local law to establish standards for the maintenance of vacant buildings and for the establishment of a vacant buildings and a real property in default register. It, this addresses the, any concerns about buildings that have been unoccupied for 90 days or more, sets various standards as to how the buildings, those buildings must be maintained. And it also established registries for vacant buildings and for real property in default. So if a building is being foreclosed, the foreclosing bank must report the, the fact that the building is in foreclosure. So that's, that's basically what the law provides. In addition, should the local law be adopted, the village will have to amend its schedule of fees because there are certain fees that are provided for in here for registering these properties. And what we do, we don't put the fees in the local law because then if you want to increase the fees, you have to amend the local laws. So instead, the local law refers to the fact that fees are established in a separate fee schedule. So that will have to be done upon the adoption of its local law. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, Mr. Swazi.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, members of the public. I have two agenda items, Mayor. The first one is actually a library item, but I just want to give a little background. It's item number six, Total Technology Solutions Engagement Professional Services, SourcePass LLC. So about five or six years ago, the village sought to bring in a big IT partner. We did an RFP, and we chose Total Technology Solutions. They have basically revolutionized our network, our infrastructure, updated it, gave us reliable disaster recovery, protect us from cyber attacks. Actually, our cybersecurity insurance actually went down a little because of it. Nonetheless, they've done a great job here, and I've been encouraging the library to take on a big IT partner. It didn't have to be the same one we use, although I thought that would be the wise way to go. And, and the library has been discussing with me, and next, the budget you're going to hear in a week or so, we have, they want to bring them on for a year, but they want to get them in right away. They had a situation with their server just about three weeks ago. And I called our account manager, and he stepped in and he got resources at no charge under our contract and helped resolve a sticky problem over there, a server-level problem. And that's the type of resources we need around here. So I think this is a limited engagement for three months. Depending on the board's decisions on the budget, it'll continue for the next year. And so Mary Ann's here tonight if she'd like to discuss anything.
Yes, so first of all, I do want to thank, yeah, thank you. Good, thank you. Thank you, Ralph, for the introduction. Yes, as he described, we've been talking about the feasibility of the library having IT support from a professional partner since I started at the library, actually, in 2018. And the time really came upon us a couple of weeks ago. I can't thank Ralph and the SourcePass team enough for stepping in and helping us with the level of services. I want to thank Ryan, who is also involved in the communication and support as well. So with that, with coordinated effort from Ralph, from the lead partner at SourcePass and with Gary, board authorization is requested for the library to engage professional IT services with SourcePass LLC in Melville, Melville, at a cost of $4,644 per month for three months, for a total of $13,932, after prorating for the first week of March, for the period beginning March 8th until May 31st. In addition, there will be a one-time upfront hardware cost of $1,060.10 to cover technical support equipment. So this will cover a total of $14,992.10. The library does expect to continue the one-year contract at the same monthly rate pending our budget approval for the 2425 year. However, if the March 2024 agreement is terminated on or before June 1st, without continuing the one-year contract, they will assess the termination cost of $4,719, which will be applied to recoup the cost of onboarding, which was somewhat streamlined, you know, because they do this for us as a matter of assistance. We don't expect that budget is up to approval of the. I would say this is one of our primary asks. So I hope that you will give that due consideration. Thank you.
Mary Ann, can I ask what happened a couple of weeks ago? You said there was an incident, what was it?
Yeah, no, we, we have a number of different server configurations in the library depending on what it's supporting. And one of our older servers, which was serving as a domain controller, was starting to not operate correctly. And Joe worked first with the HP support team. It is one of our older servers. We do have other servers that are carrying the, the load of, you know, primary file servers and things like that. But this was one of the older servers that we had, and he worked on it as much as he could with HP. And it had just been ongoing. And then we finally got to the point where it wasn't responding. And so we really, I, I think I reached out to Ralph, like after a workday, like 8 o'clock. It might have been a night of a village board meeting, for all I know. So, but I had both Ralph and Jamie Tower in communication with me in less than an hour. So it was, it was a big help. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
I just like to mention, I forgot to thank Ryan as well, who's done a great job on this side at helping us things. One of the things that they brought to the table is, we used to have 12 servers downstairs, different ages, different operating systems. The service packs weren't being applied at a timely fashion, a whole host of issues that caused problems. We virtualized many of them. So these are all the bread and butter things I bring to the table. Last year, the board supported upgrade of hardware, switches and firewalls. Brian showed me the effect of those today. He can see right through down to the device level now at the IP address, what ports are being used. Totally different environment than when I came here. So I, I, I thank you for supporting that. 12A, Mr. Brony mentioned 12A, 106 Arthur Street. It was, just for some background, back around 2000, before 2016, the village was in a piecemeal fashion, replacing our old water meters, which had to be read basically by hand by a person running down door to door, very time and manpower intensive, to a radio read meter. And now we drive down the block and they report themselves. At, in 2016, we'd accomplished maybe 40%. So we decided to do a capital project, upgrade the rest of the community, including business district. By the time we got through the project, around late 2017, mid to late 2017, only 57 people remained, approximately 57, 75 people wouldn't let us change their meters. The contractor we hired wouldn't touch some of these people because they found some of these older homes had very brittle pipes. If we go in there and take the meter out and damage the pipe, we have a big plumbing problem. So people said no. So the board at the time put a penalty on they of $250 a quarter. And we've, we're down to, right now, we're down to 18 people with that situation. But until Stan came along recently, there were 19 people. The 19 person was 106 Arthur Street. When Stan became the superintendent of order, he started following up on these things. And so when he came to me, the homeowner had asked, asked for a request and they found out that it was really easy to do. There was some misinformation. I want to remind the board that there's no superintendent of order at the time. No one really to, to engage the homeowner and understand what the issue was. So the homeowner took the path of least resistance. There was an immune compromise, individual in the home paid the penalty rather than worry about the, the family member. I also want to point out that out of the 10,000 water customers we have, about 6,850 meters, out of those 18 that remain, there is one person there who still has an old meter from 1969 and we're not charging penalty to. And that is because back then, five or six years ago, so May of 18 it was, this person wrote to me with a medical concern. I talked to her and I said, get me some medical information, which she did. I discussed it with our attorney, village council time, Peter B., and he's, he supported the notion that we did not have to change the meter and we did not have to apply the penalty. Fast forward to now, had this person's situation been known to me, I would have done the same exact thing. So besides the $1,250 that, that Stan has run on the agenda and he's, he chose the New York State COVID period, think of that was a very definable and documented period of time and easily understood. I'm asking you to expand it for the full $5750, which extends from February of 18, that quarter, to August of 23, when the fees stop accumulating. That's my ask on that. As far as other comments, I want to thank John for having his crews out this night. We were expecting heavy rains and we do have flooding up in Yale. We have flooding down in Meadow. We have a few trouble spots. So John kept his crews on cleaning out the basins and with the two back trucks. So if the flooding situation occurred, he would have to call people and they were here and they can move that water off the streets now. So thank you, John, for doing that. I want to thank Mr. Blake and his team. I had a homeowner on Chestnut Street with a tree, a new tree that was planted. It was in relative proximity to their gas line, to their home, which worried them. And I asked Mr. Blake to have his team move it and they did. And that was Tuesday afternoon. I called him Wednesday morning was moved, first thing. I got a home, I got a call from a homeowner thanking me. I usually don't get thank you calls, I want to point out to the board. And, and the last thing is that I got a call from our Long Island Railroad days on Nick Fasano about the closing of Edgemere Road. The timbers on the track behind the Edgemere Firehouse, there's an overpass there. Those timbers need to be replaced. They need two weekends to do it, one in each direction. The weekends, right now, they've asked for no trains on April 20th, that weekend, April 27th. That's a Friday through Sunday. They would close the road at 10:00 PM on Friday and open it up around 5:00 AM on Monday. The reason I'm telling you this, it's not, you know, the cement's not dried on this right now, but those are the weekends, I'm pretty sure. Mr. Fasano did respond to an email I sent out to the fire chiefs, the police department and Mr. Brony. I also let Mr. Carey know, since we have a water well at Edgemere. I also let Mr. Blake know because he has fields there and we have baseball season starting. So we are going to meet in the field with Mr. Fasano, but I want the, the people in the neighborhoods, Harvard, Yale, that area, you will have entry from the west. Nassau Boulevard, New High Park Road. We still don't know at this date and we're going to be discussing it in the field with Mr. Fasano and, and his railroad team, if the first responders can use the Edgemere route, if they'll allow first responders through there. So this also includes the, the ambulances, which the police notify. So if they can allow first responders through there, then they will. If they can accommodate them, then the first, the first responders will know.
Where would, where would they go if they couldn't?
They'd have to, they'd have to go west and come in. So, and there's one other thing, it's kind of really early to talk about, but I got a phone call from, I want to say NYSERDA, but it might've been the state agency known as NIPA, New York Power Authority. There's a project going on to bring alternate forms of energy from upstate New York and from wind out in the, out in the ocean. And I think we've talked about the Y-48 and Y-49 cables that come in at Port Washington from Westchester and they travel down Roswell Road and they go to the Garden City substation. This will be a new line. It's a 365 KB line. It'll be bidirectional. It'll allow, it'll allow the energy companies to move power across the island from Nassau and Queens. It'll free up energy in Suffolk. It's not, it's not going to start its Article VII Public Service Commission hearings till July of this year. But the reason I'm telling you is because they are going to come down Franklin Avenue. They're going to make landfall on Shore Road and Glen Cove. And they were going to run power to Syosset and they'll be running power all the way up Franklin. They're going to make a left on Stewart and they're going to come down here and they're going to go north and south on Clinton. I made them aware of the county rebuilding of Clinton Road. I made, I made them aware of the fact we're paving Stewart this year and I encouraged them to go in the green space and not to disrupt the road. But I told them if they're going to go on the road, they better put money in there to restore it completely and better than they found it. And this is expected to probably start around 2026. So they're way out in advance of it. Just want to let you know that discussion started. I encouraged them to talk to the county if they haven't already. So, and they were already aware of some of these other things, so.
As far as the Edgemere and the access for the fire trucks, that would be unacceptable if there was a fire on Yale or Harvard or some kind of an emergency and they have to go down into New High Park Road. I just don't see that working. Let Chief, if you have some, any input in that. I, I just, I think we need to talk to Mr. Fasano about that.
As with any project, we do have discussions with Mr. Swazi and as well as the agencies running it. Of course, there would be a delay in our response to that section of town if we had to go up to New High Park Road. However, we'll make do with whatever we have to do.
So to your point, Trustee Chester, I've already done the devil's advocate thing with them. He said the final plans aren't made yet. He understands that would be inconvenient for the people who need the emergency response and the first responders. So when we meet in the field, that's why the chief or one of the chiefs will be out there, represent for the police department, I'm not sure if the ambulance corps needs to be there, but we want to see if we can, if they can accommodate that. And maybe they position their scaffolding differently. Or maybe they do it over four weekends and they leave one lane clear. I don't know the answer, but we are, that's one of the things we want to accomplish is keeping it clear for first responders at a minimum.
Okay.
And it also might involve Mr. Blake moving some Little League games because it'll be inconvenient. So everyone that needs to know on this end knows, so.
Okay, well, let's continue the discussions on that. Thank you.
I just had one quick follow-up, Ms. Mayor. Ralph, can you just tell us again? I didn't follow exactly what the MTA is doing.
Oh, the MTA?
Yeah.
The timbers, the timbers are, are need replacement. I don't want to say they're rotted. They need replacement. They've aged out and they want to put new timbers there. So they have to close the track. The timber is under the rails on the overpass.
Okay.
The railroad, the railroad is tied right now. So take the rails off.
Thank you, trustee.
They're replacing the timbers on, under the rails on both, both directions.
I'm from New Jersey.
That's my update, Mayor. Any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you, pal.
Thank you. All right, so I will speak to item number four on the agenda, which is the Village of Garden City Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment and St. Paul's Use Plan. I want to thank the five members of the advisory committee who have been working extremely diligently, John Cantwell, Soraya Gage, Bill Cavand, Jim Apostolides and Walter Beal. And the work has been, and also the trustees who have been involved in interacting with that committee, coming to meetings. We have, are at a point now, we began looking into a search for a company to help us in our goal of finding a project at St. Paul's that preserves part or all of the building, has widespread, spread community support and can be executed. So we started with a search for companies that did master plans and of recreation and assessed recreational facilities. We came up with seven, we started out with seven companies. The subcommittee did research, then we spoke with Mr. Blake, who is, has extensive experience in this field. His, the companies he had were basically the same. We combined our list. We started off with seven companies. One was smaller and had planned to join forces with another. They dropped out. We then had six companies with the experience we were looking for. Two of them decided to merge together and present as a team. So we had five candidates who were interviewed by the committee along with trustees. We limited it to four trustees for the open meetings law reasons. We interviewed the five and brought back the two top candidates finalists. And we selected or found the, the, the top candidate of all of them to be Branstead or Carroll unanimously as a group in our discussions. We have attached to the agenda their proposal and some materials about what, explaining what they will be doing. It's a very important piece of, I think what we need is a village to be able to get to the endpoint of a successful project. And it will provide us information on not only the needs of our community, but also the resident sentiment on the building, different parts of the building, what residents want, need and would pay for in a St. Paul's project. And I'm excited to have this on the agenda and to have had the, you know, the help that we've had of the subcommittee and the trustees. And I don't know if anyone else wants to share anything about this or explain any part, I know Ed or Michelle.
I sat in a few of the meetings and the group of companies that came in to speak to us were really impressive. Obviously, a few of them rose, the cream rose to the top, but it was very interesting to hear, you know, them present to us how they analyze all of this. And I think that the, the committee has done a really good job with Mr. Blake on picking out these, these companies. I was really impressed. I was very happy to be part of it. I think that it's a really good move that we're doing to engage this company to speak with the residents. I think that the residents, once it's done, I think it'll be done really well, very thoroughly. They're going to try and assess all types of sentiment from the village, which I think is really, really important, try to get all the groups involved. And I look forward to watching them do it. And I think hopefully we'll get it done and started before this, the summer vacations. But I think it's a very big positive for us.
I agree wholeheartedly with, with trustee Michelle. The, the entire group were impressive. And as I said to a bunch of folks and they agree with me, it would be hard not to make a, a good decision if any three or four of them would have, would have rose to the top. I was also particularly impressed with the breadth of experience that, that our finalists had, as they've been in the business for many, many years and had tackled projects not exactly like ours, but somewhat similar. They're going to bring exceptional professionalism to the survey portion of, of their, of their assessment and their assistance. So I, I look forward very much to engaging with them. There will be a committee, I guess probably the advisory committee, that will work very closely with them. And I assume Ralph and, and, excuse me, maybe Paul. So onward and upward, and I know there's, there's tons more to do.
And also the other thing that's really important is like the two finalists were very aware of the historical significance of St. Paul's. So like that's going to be taken into consideration a lot. So people who are worried about, you know, I know our historical society is very concerned about it, but you know, they, this group will be, take all those considerations into account. So it's not going to be overlooked at all. Like everything is going to be looked at and everything that's important to every resident is going to be analyzed. So like, don't be nervous.
It's kind of interesting. I heard their presentation, Branstead or Carroll, it was one of the first presentations we had. I did not make this, this last one. And I was impressed with them back then. I was telling the mayor, let's, let's, let's just go with them. But I'm glad we heard from all the others. And yes, there were a number that were quite impressive, I agree with you. But I'm glad we went with them in our final decision.
And one thing, just to let people know is, part of this, they'll start with a thorough assessment which, of our recreation offerings. And that is an important piece and Mr. Blake will be working closely with them because in assessing needs and trying to find the answer at St. Paul's, we need to have that information about what we, what we have and, and what our recreation needs are.
Yeah, and the other thing that they're doing, which I, I'm really happy about is they're going to do kind of like a master plan for us with Mr. Blake up like the next three to five, 10 years, which, you know, like who would have thought pickleball was a big deal like seven years ago, right? So they're going to look at a lot of that with us. And I think it's something that we need.
So I think it's exciting what's ahead of us and important to get really the top people in at every stage. And I feel like that's what we have here with Branstead or Carroll. All right, so some other updates because there has been a lot of work going on and progress being made. You may have seen the invitation outside posted to the community center presentations. That'll be in the Garden City News tomorrow. We'll be sharing it on our website as well. And Soraya Gage and Jim Apostolides on the committee have really led this effort and they have been incredibly thorough in doing it. They've visited many community centers. We heard from residents, recommendations, passed them on to them. They went and looked at the places. They met with the, you know, the directors. They looked at the finances and they're going to have a really interesting presentation. It's going to be given twice on Saturday, March 16th, 2 o'clock at the library. And then if you can't make that one, the following week, March 23rd, 2 o'clock at the library. And we have heard some of the trustees, as well as the committee, we've all heard their feedback as they've gone on these different visits. We've tried to put a little bit in the ads, but this will be an in-depth presentation. And I think it's going to, we'll all learn a lot from it. And since the community center, why are we doing this? Well, the community center with Parkland designation, that has emerged as the, the use that is, you know, feasible for that location. So I think we all agree it's important to learn about those community centers and what they have to offer. And I've learned a lot from Soraya and Jim, and I think everyone else will too. So hope people can make it to at least one of those. We will film them as well and share, but it'd be great if you could come.
So that's this Saturday and the following, next Saturday?
From Saturday and then the following Saturday, the 16th and the 23rd. So the idea is to start sharing this information so people are more familiar with the concept, the finances of a community center, how they work in other communities as the professionals come in and do our community engagement and surveying. All right, and the, the last item on St. Paul's is, we did get legal advice. The Board of Trustees will be looking into every alternative for financing of the, of a St. Paul's project as well as grants. We realize the importance of, of finding the most affordable way to, you know, have a successful project there. We did request an analysis of the St. Paul's Alliance proposal, which many have probably seen, if not all, that was, actually was numbers that were given out at the last presentation. So a year ago and have been on, on their website. And we did ask for an analysis from a law firm and we got their response. And we're putting that on the website just to, I think it's important that we're straight with residents and we look into everything and share the information as we receive it. So they have reported, they analyzed the St. Paul's Alliance proposal and they, they said, though presumptively well-intentioned, the plan is unfortunately vague and critically incomplete. SPA or St. Paul's Alliance. SPA or St. Paul's Alliance had not identified coherently the legal structure of any specific public-private partnership through which St. Paul's realistically could be restored and operated. To afford the proposal full deference and the benefit of every doubt, they undertook a broad view of various alternative arrangements through which a conservancy theoretically might be organized. They concluded that while there are models for licensing the parkland and building for rehabilitation and operation as a practical, practical matter, none are economically viable. The village, they wrote, is unable to alienate St. Paul's without a difficult and lengthy legal political process involving state and local authorizing legislation. Although the village may legally structure the relationship as a revocable license with the community organization, that arrangement likely would prove economically unrealistic for a variety of reasons. And they listed four reasons that they were considering. Number one, the village has power to borrow funds more efficiently and at a lower cost than the SPA principally because the village can borrow funds in municipal bond market at triple tax exempt rates, which the SPA cannot. Number two, they said the SPA could not lean St. Paul's and does not have its own collateral that would be acceptable to a lender sufficient to support a loan large enough to renovate St. Paul's. The village's highest bond rating, Moody's AAA, would be recognized by lenders to support the loan. Number three, the SPA cannot reduce construction and labor costs as long as St. Paul's is a village-owned property and the project is supported in whole or in part with village revenues as SPA proposes, then the project would remain subject to competitive bidding and prevailing wage or higher labor costs. And number four, it would be costly to the village and its residents to oversee the activities of the SPA's work on the project as would be necessary to prevent alienation and other impermissible uses, whereas those costs would be avoided by direct village action. And we received this right, advice was prepared by Ruskin Moscow Faltecek. So I wanted to share that with everyone and it is available on the board's website. And we will continue as we move forward to explore all financing options available to the village and any fund sources. Next week, we have busy week. Got the budget Thursday night, budget meeting Thursday night, Wednesday night. And I want to thank the traffic commission has been working with, and John Barone and the police commissioner. There has been a great effort in compiling the information regarding our meeting that's upcoming, that will be on Wednesday night with the cathedral about the reopening of the roadway. We know it's something that's important to residents and we recognize its importance to the village. And we will be meeting with them on Wednesday night and hoping that they will see this the same way and will be able to move forward on reopening the roadway. Just want to thank the traffic commission, Charlie, Ed, Mike and Larry, as well as Commissioner Jackson, who has compiled some of the accident data that we'll be presenting in support of reopening the roadway. And Mr. Barone, who's engineering department, has prepared some concepts for a potential roadway design. So just wanted to update everyone. We're working hard on that and that meeting is, is Wednesday night. And Tuesday night will be, I think, a great night with our new arborist and I hope many will be able to attend that. The last thing, and I know I've been speaking a long time, is the ballots are in, the election is coming and the village clerk has put out a notice that the, the ballots are in and people can start tomorrow afternoon picking up if you're doing either an absentee ballot or mail-in, I'm sorry, absentee or a early, early mail-in ballot, which is something brand new this year. Those are available as of tomorrow afternoon and everyone's encouraged to vote. All right. Do any other trustees have any comments?
I did have one personal note, Mayor. On Tuesday at about 4:00 PM, there was at least a small tremor in the financial industry. As a 45-year veteran retired, her name happens to be Michelle Beach Harrington. She worked for 30-plus years at Merrill, was one of the first female traders on the floor. And then somehow, and I can't understand why, she was moved to sales and then just sold bonds all over the country. So it was a terrific career. Now, you know, Michelle, she isn't finished. She's just taking a little hiatus and then she's got another job lined up at CW Post LIU in the development department. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge her. Now, before we, we clap, I haven't done this yet, but we're going to take a little wager on when Bruce Torino and, and Charlie Kelly will be retiring. The bidding starts at 2029 and I'll take the action after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm still in shock.
Congratulations. All right. Any other trustees with comments?
If I may?
Yes.
I've received some comments from residents about the unavailability of handicap parking behind Seventh Street stores. I would ask that if possible, on patrol, the police department check on utilization of the handicap parking spaces behind the Seventh Street stores on both sides so that we can determine and measure this problem that's been brought to our attention. And then we can determine if we need to add handicap parking spaces behind the Seventh Street stores on both sides without any litigation.
For sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I haven't, I don't think I've heard this mentioned publicly, but we did receive a check from Southern Land for $251,000. This, when we gave them the water availability letter back when, H2M had prepared the letter for us and they also looked at ordinary amenities that would be their responsibility. Bless you, sir. And the, the water main that we just replaced from the back of Roseville Field down to Osborne and continued on Commercial Avenue, the section in front of their property became their responsibility as part of that letter. And it was appraised at $251,000 and they did pay the check recently. So we have that money. Those good report received money.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Do we have any citizen comments on agenda items in the room? Someone could, would you like to come up?
Good evening. I'm Leslie Fitzpatrick, 106 Arthur Street and on agenda item 12 with the water meter, water meter reversal of penalties application. And I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Lanigan and the board of trustees for considering this, my request, and also to Mr. Swazi for helping me to put together the materials to show forth the good faith that I paid the penalties and the difficult situation that I was under. And also to Mr. Carey for facilitating the change of the water meter ultimately when the medical condition was no longer present.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Didn't you say you never get a thank you?
Good evening. Steven Alodi, 139 Meadow Street. How much did the review you read about the St. Paul's Alliance, how much did that cost the village?
Oh, the, I don't have that information, the cost of the legal opinion.
And, and item four, the business district paving project, I know we've been dipping into that almost every meeting. What is the balance of that account?
So there currently exists about a million dollars in that account. So we're, we're deducting another 159,000 from it.
And I'm not sure it's exactly an agenda item, but Mr. Swazi mentioned Southern Land. Did they provide the money in escrow? I think at the last meeting you talked that the five or $10,000 for the escrow.
We have not heard back. Have you heard back? We haven't heard back yet. No, it has not been forthcoming yet. Let's follow up on that tomorrow, please.
Thank you, Ralph.
Hello. My name is Brooke Scotto. My husband, Victor Scotto, and I own Seventh Street Cafe. Thank you, everybody, for the chance to speak. We are so worried. We've been ordered to remove our flower boxes from our outdoor dining area and our potted plants and also to take all of our tables and chairs and pull them up against the wall every night and chain them up and padlock them up. None of this is feasible. It might not sound like a big deal, but it's a very big deal. It's going to destroy our outdoor dining. First of all, the plants and flowers are impeccably maintained. I myself, every day, take every little dead leaf and every flower off. They are beautiful. We get nothing but compliments from everybody all summer. Everybody really enjoys it. It's a very, very beautiful, pleasant place to eat. So first of all, the aesthetic, that's going to be destroyed. And even more important than that, well, I've heard, oh, it's a, it's a COVID structure. It's not, a plant box is not a COVID structure. It has nothing to do with COVID. We've had them for 15 years. It's absolutely nothing to do with a hideous eyesore COVID structure. That's totally different thing. So there's, they're beautiful. There's no reason to remove them. And now even more importantly than all this, it is necessary. It's not just that I love them and everybody loves them. There is an issue with bikes being driven very, very, very fast up and down Seventh Street by teenagers, a lot of them, not all of them, but a lot of them like to drive as fast as they possibly can. And just imagine you're sitting on Seventh Street with your back to the street, trying to enjoy a meal and right behind your back, you've got kids zooming. I mean, that's a very uncomfortable feeling. You can't enjoy a meal and it's, it's actually dangerous. I'm sure we all remember Officer Paul Hennessy got taken out, out of commission by a teenager on a bike, hit him. They thought it was fine to run into a police officer on their bike and he was going around with a sling, his arm in a sling for months. I'm sure we all remember this. I don't want that to happen to one of my customers. I've got a lot of senior citizens, first of all. I don't want that to happen to anybody of any age, but we have a lot of people in their 70s, 80s. I really worry about their safety, all of them. They're not going to be comfortable and they're not going to be safe. I can't have outdoor dining unless I have a physical barrier between the customers and the bikes. It is really, really important. It is really important. And then all of the, the tables and chairs are supposed to be dragged up against the building and locked up, chained up at what, 10 o'clock at night, 10:30 at night and stay like that in the, in the wee hours of the night up until the morning when we get there again. For what? The street is empty. Why do they have to be locked up out of the way when there's no one? I, I hope there's nobody roaming around on the street in the middle of the night. You know, it just makes no sense and, and we can't do it because our plant boxes, we have cement blocks in there to keep them stable. Again, safety on windy days. We can't afford to have them moving around and potential injury again, which, which can and will happen. My husband designed something with the umbrellas on a windy day. He put cement things to keep everything stable from blowing around. So we cannot feasibly drag all of this up against the building every night. And there's just no reason, there is literally no reason whatsoever, except for, as, as John explained to me, these outdated codes. I mean, they're just old, super old, ancient, outdated codes that have no purpose and they're just nothing but detrimental. So instead of destroying our business, can we just please fix these, fix up these codes?
Do you want to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no. Yeah, no, I do, I do. I have looked into this with, with Mr. G, Mr. G Ivanello, and I know some of his team has been over at your location as well as French Workshop and Leo's. So unfortunately, it is a violation, a clear violation of the code. Just let me finish and I, I know you think it's outdated, but the code was, was adopted for a reason. I'm not sure what year it was adopted. And these structures became allowed by, not as a favor, but for your business and other businesses to, to attract additional customers and, and serve outside during COVID. So before COVID, my understanding is that there wasn't, I don't know if there was one of these structures in town. So we may take the, 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 the code apart and, and, and see whether it makes sense to change the code, but it's clearly in violation and it's, you know, four years since COVID, two years since we're back to somewhat normal. I know it's very attractive. I've eaten at, at your location outside during COVID and after, but it is not right at this point. And if, if we want to maintain some continuity of how our street looks on Seventh Street, which is our most important business district in town, it's got to be uniform. So we understand that you're not happy. We thank you for taking the action because unfortunately, the other two establishments have not responded. And they will respond very soon or we're going to have to act. I will not, but of course, Mr. G's team will. So thank you. We hear you. I can't guarantee anything has happened, but I can guarantee you that we will take a look.
If we could please even just compromise to have the plant boxes in the corners, literally to physically protect the diners. I am worried about them getting hit and hurt and injured. I'm very worried about it, very worried about it. We need some physical barrier. We have to have it. And this, you know, I beg to differ with you. It does, it has nothing to do with COVID. We've had.
No, I, I totally agree.
15 years, way before we ever heard the word COVID. It's got nothing to do with COVID. We did take down our COVID structure. Victor built big walls with windows. That's gone. It's long gone.
Okay, right.
COVID is over. We don't need that thing anymore. But these plant boxes were existing many years before COVID to the great enjoyment of all. It's nothing but beautiful and they're not in the way. I understand that there has to be enough room for ladies to push a baby carriage, two baby carriages. And, you know, Victor measured it and we have exactly, I could tell you right now, we have precisely eight feet and six inches of free space. That is enough to drive a car down the street if you need to. It's plenty of room. So there's, there's really no logical reason why this request can't be accommodated, not just for me, for everybody. It benefits the whole town. It's not for me selfishly. It is for everybody. And my primary consideration is to keep my guests safe.
I understand.
Please, please.
And certainly, just one issue on safety, it would certainly be a, be a substantial barrier protecting your customers from a bicycle, not from a car, but definitely a bicycle. That, that, that I understand. So we thank you. We hear you. We'll take it under advisement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
One second. Part of the difficulty with codes is they exist, but it's an unwritten rule that no piece of paper can't be changed by another piece of paper.
I like that.
So you have a situation in which we had one before, and that is the board decided to have a moratorium to look at the codes because of a particular shop that was not acceptable to debate. I suggest to this board that it likewise consider a moratorium in that we then determine a workable alternative until we are able to put something together. I too walk down the street and I talk to most of the shops. For instance, at the pizza place, if you want to take all those tables down, there is no place to put them inside. You have to take them to the basement. Granted, they have much younger staff than many, but it still takes them about a half hour. So there, there always can be a solution. The question is if we have enough time with the moratorium and to determine what would be an acceptable solution to everybody. That's my request of this board to consider that because quite candidly, candidly, just because you live by a rule doesn't mean it's a good rule. It just means that it exists.
Right. I totally agree with you. I love, like, how Seventh Street has kind of improved. I like, I think that your setting is beautiful and very nice. I think now what the French Workshop has done is, like, just really lovely and enjoyable. And, you know, I understand, you know, I've spent some time talking with Giuseppe about it because I'm upset about what happens. But I understand, you know, there are laws, there are codes and rules. And Eddie and I have, our trustee, Finner and I, have spent a lot of time on Seventh Street going through all this. And we want to do something that is workable and feel it's really important to have the business owners and understand that we're all going to be on the same side with this. And we're going to try and figure this out.
Thank you. Thank you. That's fantastic to hear. I really appreciate it so much. It's a big relief. I'm glad this went so well. I'm really happy. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Yeah, on agenda items. Comments on agenda items?
George Salem. I'm wondering how the process of selection of the RFP, you didn't have an RFP, did you on this?
No.
What?
We did it in RFQ instead, like, we focused on the qualifications. It's professional services. And there was just an article actually recently in NICOM talking about how important it is, early stages in a project like this, not to do an RFP and just go with the lower bidder, to focus on the qualifications, especially on something like this, which is going to be such a costly project. In the end, it's important to get the most qualified company performing this work.
Was the select, was BCS the lowest bid?
It was done based on the qualifications, the process. I explained, we set out, you know, what we were looking for. We had questions. We had a scope of work. And we began with the seven, and then went down to five. We got proposals. But they were all offering somewhat different, you know, because it's a professional services, we're looking for them to help us get to a point of knowledge on moving forward. And they were offering different, somewhat, there was a lot of overlap, but somewhat different services in their recommendation. So I don't know if that answers it. It wasn't, it wasn't that we were looking for this many meetings, this many, you know, surveys, give us a price on it. That's not the way it was approached. It was based on the interviewing the companies to find the most qualified to provide us with what we need.
That didn't answer my question.
What's the question?
The lowest bidder in the final analysis.
We can't answer that because we didn't get bids on the exact same work. We didn't say to, you know, the other finalist, what would it cost for you to do exactly what Branstad is doing? And we didn't ask Branstad, what would it cost for you to do? They were offering different services. I don't know if Ralph wants to expound on that at all.
Yeah, even when we bid something out by law, we don't have to take the lowest bidder. We take the lowest responsible bidder, and that's based on interviews with the staff and the people responding. Through an RFP process, it's the same thing. And with professional services, you're buying the service at a price, but it wasn't measured against, they weren't asked to give us dollars. They were asked to give us qualifications. And the committee interviewed everyone based on materials they sent forward and presented, and the questions and scope that the committee presented them advance. So the interviewees had knowledge of what the village was looking for, and the interviewers had advanced materials to reference so they could ask more precise and intelligent questions. So price is price, but at the end of the day, it's a service they're buying, not a dollar value based on a competitive bid.
Regarding the geographic activities of this BCS, how much of their work is done in the Midwest versus, say, New York City, New York State? The kind of, whether there's rules and regulations that would be, have to be followed, and the rules in the New York area are different than, I mean, Kentucky is a very different kind of place than New York.
They've actually done a lot of work in New Jersey by chance.
They do a lot of work in northern New Jersey in towns like ours. They also, or Virginia, they're doing some stuff in northern Virginia. So that's a lot like us. And
They've done a lot of work, actually. I can, I'm not sure if it's all, but the different states that did come up at one point, they've done a lot of work in different areas, not on Long Island, but for what we are hiring them for, there aren't any specific New York rules that would be different from New Jersey.
They've done some major projects in New Jersey.
They have offices in other parts of the country, I understand, where they might have headquarters, like, so what percentage of their business is, say, Midwest where the headquarters is? And those, I don't know, maybe I'm barking up the wrong tree, but...
He's actually out of Kentucky, but he does work, he travels for these projects. He did mention, like, he can, having, you know, being out of Kentucky, you can be competitive, you know, more competitive probably in your pricing because cost of living to run the operation out of Kentucky as opposed to having an office in a more high-priced area. But they travel for the work.
Are they going to come and speak to the residents?
Yes.
It's scheduled?
It will.
Once we retain, once we sign them on, we will work out, you'll find out a date when they're coming. And I'm hoping everybody comes to meet them.
George, you'll be front and center with them.
Can I hear you?
You'll be front and center with them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Andrew, Garden City, New York. I wish to address two agenda items, number four and number seven. First, number four, St. Paul. Has anybody been to AMC Theater in Roseville Field lately? The movies there are ridiculous and stupid on purpose. And when I go there on Tuesday for discount day, like, I'm the only one in the theater. Nobody's going, okay? Again, the movies are deliberately stupid and ridiculous, okay? Again and again, at these board meetings, I recommend or suggest to the board that they utilize St. Paul as a motion picture studio. And I'm just wondering if the Hollywood crowd got to the board and told them not to, because they don't want the competition. Streaming services need content, okay? Where are they going to get it? As far as financing the project, that's ridiculous. Just let people know what your intention is, and donations will pour in. They will pour in, okay? You'll be, whatever, okay? And then the donors get to participate in the production. Like, if you're a billionaire and you want your daughter to be a movie star, well, just donate a million dollars, and the St. Paul Motion Picture Studio will make a movie. And you're going to have the whole village participating in the project, starting with stories, resources like cars and boats and homes. I mean, everything is right here. And the village can make billions of dollars. I mean, this is like a no-brainer, a no-brainer. I mean, I could, I could direct like a thousand movies simultaneously. You can make movies that take 10 years to make, where you document a person's life. I mean, it's just, again, your utilization of your imagination is profound, okay? You need to utilize your imagination. Again, anyway, second thing is the, the trees, removing trees, removing stumps. I hear this again and again at the meetings. The trees are being blanketed with salt on a regular basis. If there's a dusting of snow, that's going to evaporate, you know, by, you know, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock in the morning, regardless. The parking lots get blanketed with salt, as do the trees. And then they die. And then they have to be replaced. And then stumps got to get grinded down. As far as trees in Garden City, go to the lot by CVS and Water Zoo. Look at those trees. It's, I mean, it makes you want to cry. Just look at them. I'm a tree person. I like trees, okay? I mean, they've been mutilated so profoundly, from the salt and from the training, the pruning, whatever. So that's all I have to say about these issues. But as Arnold says, I'll be back.
Thank you. Mr. Welton.
Good evening, Mayor, the Board of Trustees, John Wilkman, the Chamber. Is this non-agenda items or agenda items?
Agenda items.
Okay. I stepped out of the room for a moment. I just want to know if the record reflects that the Easter corporate was approved.
It will be. We haven't voted yet.
Okay, all right. I stepped out.
I expect it will be.
I didn't know where we were. I'll come back.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments in the room on agenda items? Any comments on Zoom on agenda items? Okay.
Hi, it's Rich Correio, Meadbrook Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I don't know, I apologize. I don't know if this was an agenda item, but I heard Mr. Swazi talking briefly about power lines coming down, I believe from the North Shore, to route through, I think he said Franklin Avenue and Stewart. I don't recall the exact specifications, but, and Mr. Swazi, you mentioned it's starting around 2026, I believe. So I was just trying to get a little more information on this. Are these items, is there any guarantee that these utilities will be buried? I mean, what's the plan in terms of how they're going to be routed through the village?
Mr. Correio, I'm sorry to mention, I did ask that question. It's entirely underground. No overhead.
And that's, I don't know there are no guarantees in life, but is that, is that a guarantee?
Well, it's not my project, but I was, I asked the question. I was told it was subterranean, and underwater, it's submarine. So it's underwater and it's underground the whole way. No aerial.
And, thank you. And what's the nature of, I might have missed the beginning portion of what you were saying.
The, I don't have any more information than I told you. I sat on a conference call. They are doing the due diligence with, with community leaders, elected officials in the jurisdictions around it. They will go through an environmental review process. They will go through a Public Service Commission, also known as the PSC, Article VII process, which is a two-year process, which includes multiple public hearings. At the end of the day, this is about the energy grid, making it flexible, making it more power available where it's needed, be able to move energy bidirectionally, and also anticipating the growth of electric as we move away from fossil fuels. It's also part of New York State alternative energy profile, which is to be rid of fossil fuels by, I think, 2050. I forget the exact, or 85% free. But anyway, there'll be more information forthcoming. I did ask them for the slides, but they were basically, they were trying to understand, let us know about it. And besides the Garden City concerns I mentioned, like, please stay underground in the mall rather than rip up our newly paved Stewart Avenue, I did happen, because of my knowledge of the regional issues going on with Clinton and such, I did mention the national, recent National Ridge Projects, and also the upcoming Nassau County Clinton Road Project. So I made them aware of the other municipalities and government projects that are in the affected area. And they would learn that on their own anyway, but I wanted to make sure I pointed them in that direction.
The lead data is his LIPA?
I'm sorry?
This is a LIPA project, or?
No, this is New York State Power Authority or NYSERDA. It's not LIPA at all.
NYSERDA, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
It might be NIPA, though. I'm not sure. I could get, I can get it back to you if you contact me tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Bob, where's 28 Growth? I want to comment on the number four. Apparently, part of it has to do with also getting information from the community, their recommendations to go forward with projects. I would, I would recommend that the village should first publish a list of all services and programs that are available for our youth, adult residents, and seniors, senior citizens, from all the organizations and facilities in Garden City. Well, this should include Village Services, Recreation Department, Department of Education, Library, Senior Center, Religious Institution, Adelphi and Hofstra University in the town of Hempstead. I strongly believe that all residents must be informed about everything that is already offered before any costly surveys were done, or work is done on St. Paul's. People, people I spoke to, they mentioned, I'd love to see this or that. And I mentioned, we already have that. I think a lot of people don't really know what we have here and what is offered. And I would like to have the board perhaps formulate a list, send it out to the public, so that people are not asking for things we already have.
All right, thank you. You know, one of our reasons for picking this company that's so experienced in the field is that they do all of that research. They, that is one of their initial things. When they're assessing, they're assessing our rec department, they're also assessing what's available in our community and surrounding communities for residents. But I understand your point and that it will be part of the process.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. Because as they say, I've spoken to people around here, neighbors and so on, and they mentioned, I'd love to see this or that or whatever. And I said, we have this and that. And they don't know about it. So I think that it has to be more publicly known, so that people are not asking for something that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just comment? To the last speaker, Mr. Correio, I did check the email. It is a New York Power Authority project. It's called Propel. The acronym is NIPA, N-Y-P-A. I don't know if there's any information out there about it yet publicly, but that's the project that's not on the radar screen yet. 2026, first shovel in the ground. Don't know where that's going to be. It doesn't mean it's in Garden City, the first shovel.
All right. So I think those are all the comments on agenda items. And we'll move now to the public hearing, a local law to establish standards for the maintenance of vacant buildings and the establishment of vacant buildings and real property in default registries. Does someone want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They will open the public hearing. And we had an explanation earlier from Council. I don't know if trustee Kelly wants to speak at all to this. I know this was the initiative that you brought forward based on complaints I heard from residents.
Yes, this is a resident-initiated local law in the sense that we received complaints from residents in various parts of the village concerning homes that had been vacant for an extended period of time. And they wanted information on the homes. They wanted to know when it was going to end. They wanted to know what was the cause of it. There was certain information that the, that we believed, the law committee believed that people are entitled to when a house becomes vacant, doesn't have windows, has holes in the roof, and becomes a problem on a street. And this local law is simply meant to address that, that issue and those complaints that we got from east, that we got from each section of the village. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Fishberg, if you want to summarize it again to be, so it's part of the public hearing?
In addition. In addition to what trustee Kelly said, an important part of this local law is to establish certain maintenance standards, to require that the buildings be certain maintenance standards to require that the buildings be put in a condition that would be, make sure that there are no holes in the roof, no open areas in the, in the facade of the building, to require that there be coverings on the doors and windows, any cracked glass be replaced, things of that nature, that the plumbing be in order, that the electrical be in order. If they're in a commercial building, if there are any elevators or dumb waiters or escalators, that they be maintained or taken out of service so that they don't become a hazard. So that's an important part of the, of this law to require that the building be maintained in a way that it would not become a nuisance. And then the second half of the law requires that, as I indicated before, that property that is vacant, that there, that be properly registered with the village. And even if it's being maintained properly, the village wants to know about these buildings that have been vacant and be able to keep tabs on them. And also, any mortgage company that's foreclosing on a building, that they too would have to register so that it's known who is responsible for the building in the event that there has to be any kind of maintenance called for, so that we, there's somebody registered with the village who can be contacted to ensure that the maintenance is being done properly.
Thank you. Any comments on the, for the public hearing in the room?
Steve Alardi, Meadow Street. Would this public hearing affect public utilities or public transportation agencies and their properties and buildings?
It doesn't really address, when you say a public utility, it wouldn't address, for instance, the railroad, if that's what you're talking about. But if they, if they have a building that's an accessory structure, yes, that would be included.
Okay.
Any other comments from anyone in the room? Anyone, any comments from anyone on the Zoom call for the public hearing? Any other trustee comments?
Just a quick one. I think this is a very thorough proposal in terms of its breadth. And I think a thank you is due to the Buildings Department, to Council, Charlie, and the Legal Committee. Because a lot of research had to be done to figure out what the proper components and sections of the laws. So before we vote, I think it behooves us to say a bit of thanks. Thanks, guys, very much.
Joining that, I feel like it's, I think we've all heard the complaints and we haven't had anything on the books really to address them. So thank you, Mr. Givinelli, Mr. Fishberg, Trustee Kelly, who really led this initiative, and Trustee Finneran, both of the legal committee. So, all right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. I'll make a motion to adopt a local law to establish standards for the maintenance of vacant buildings and the establishment of vacant buildings and real property in default registries.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it passed unanimously. All right, we'll move on now to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th, regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Do we have a motion to approve the February 20th, 2024, regular board meeting minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of the shortest meeting we've ever had, which was on the night when we had to be here the latest because it was grievance night.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two abstained, six in favor. All right. And at this point, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment on item number 12, the total of $5,750?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, so the consent calendar is approved with the amendment in 12 of the total of $5,750 rather than the $1,250.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we have a discussion on the agenda, on the offering of handicap parking placards at Village Hall. This is something that was brought up previously. There was a request to look into providing that service for residents. And I think we have some, do we have some more information on that today?
Today, did you say?
For the meeting. Do we have, I thought there was some update on that.
There was a lot of outreach. Mrs. Galanek has been doing a lot of work on this. The, at the moment, residents have to go to the county offices over near what I'll call the Coliseum area. And it's inconvenient, especially for people who are getting handicap permits. And here, if they were to be able to do it here, it's obviously extremely convenient. They can pull up to the door and walk right in and get the permit. And that's how it's done in many villages, including Rockville Center. And it struck me that the number of permits being issued out of the Rockville Center office was rather high. And if we have a comparable number, this will be a major service to residents to make this a easier task for them to accomplish and a quicker task. And, but I, but I think, and I'll turn to Mrs. Galanek, because it, I think it requires more outreach by us. I know that the county was not happy with us thinking of doing this. And there was a pushback from the county that they do it much better than anyone could ever do. And they ferret out fraud, and they have all kinds of tools and techniques that the villagers do not have. Many villages in Nassau County do it themselves. And I'm not aware of any widespread fraud regarding handicap permits in those villages. And I think that we should do a little more look into it, a little more research in terms of what these villages have to say about the burden it's placed on their resources. So we can have an idea of that. And I think it would just add up to one or two a day, was my impression of the numbers. But I'm sure Mrs. Galanek has more information on it.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. I did speak to the office, the Nassau County office about this. They said they currently think they issue approximately 1,000 to Garden City residents a year. They were going to do a little more research. The director is actually out until March 11th, but we'll be getting some more information to me after that. His concern was that there is a lot of fraud in general with handicap parking passes. And he felt like with us, with the office already issuing 1,000, that number may increase dramatically if the ease, if it was made easier for people to obtain. His argument for it being easier was that the county, when they do it, they have a HIPAA disclosure in their paperwork. So when they take in your application, they then call the doctors and actually verify to their, in their own due diligence, that they think it is warranted for temporary or permanent handicap parking. The villages that offer this now, I have not spoken to all of them. I did speak to Rockville Center. Their process is very, very simple. They take the application, they immediately issue a placard. Add a number of 1,000 plus. If that number becomes abused, that would result in a lot of handicap parking needs within town. And if that, we don't know the severity of, if it could be abused, what the level of fraud would be. I think it would be a learning experience as we went through it. But his argument was to do it right, to take the right legal action in issuing these and making sure people are using them responsibly is not being done correctly by the villages that do do it right now. So again, it's a, you know, it's the county's job, so they want to probably keep that. But also, I do think some of his guidance is important for us to listen to, because I think if it does become something that we do offer through the village, we should aim to do it the best way to serve the residents here and make sure that we're also doing it without abuse and fraud running rampant through this type of issuance of permits.
And I, and I think one thing that we want to consider is if we were to include a HIPAA form, that would necessarily mean we were going to devote staff resources
Yes.
to reviewing the papers that come in. And so I think we need to be mindful of the amount of work this would cause. If we do it the streamlined way, where we're open to fraud, obviously less resources. But if we do it the complete way, as the county is suggesting is the proper way, that no coincidence is their way, and it's going to take more time and more resources because somebody's going to have to review the medical records that come in. Somebody's going to have to request the medical records that come in. It seems to me that doing it that way, doing verification, will be a much more significant undertaking by the village. So when we estimate how much time and how many resources this is going to take, if we take it in, I think we should measure it by the way of doing it the county way, not the Rockville Center or village way, that it's done currently, based on the information we have right now. No disrespect to any village.
Yeah, what would be interesting to learn is how many are rejected, if they issue 1,000, whether there are rejections. And where specifically is the office? Is it on Oak Street? You said it's by the Coliseum.
It's on, what is it, Ovington?
Earl Ovington.
I think that's where it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's where it is. But, see, that's why, that's why you're an esteemed member of the law committee, because that's a great question. Like, how many are rejected?
Yeah.
I'd like to know that. I'd like to know that for Rockville Center and for the county. So if we could find that out, that would be great.
But to be clear, though, do we need approval from Nassau County?
Yeah, I think you need this. So we actually need approval from the state. So the first thing would be to decide if it's something that we want to move forward with. And then we have to apply to the state to actually issue them through the village. I don't know what that process is, because we didn't get that foreign discussions with, I didn't get that foreign discussions with him. And I don't know how lengthy of a process this is. But knowing that other villages do it and hearing the Rockville Center process, I don't think it's particularly difficult.
That was my, that was my next question, is if there's concerns about whether people are going to kind of, kind of cut the corners on this, and if Rockville Center has gotten the approval for it, it doesn't sound like it's the most stringent review process at the state level.
Right, right.
Can I just ask, Kelly, in your review with these villages and such, can you discuss the matter if they have any, if they've done due diligence to protect themselves from liability? Let's say you didn't issue one and someone got hurt, you know, something like that. So if, do they have insurance that covers it? Maybe the county can answer the question, but we should probably know if there's an insurance issue related to this activity.
Right.
Owing that to the hardworking Kelly or trustee Kelly?
I see. I think very highly of both Kellys, but to Village Clerk Kelly.
I, I will say, one of the other things that he mentioned, just in keeping in mind the time commitment from the village, is that another aspect of it is when people get tickets and start saying, well, I had a handicap placard. I just didn't have it with me. Or when people have one and they shouldn't have one, that's something else. Then you have to go through the verification of that and coordinate with the police department for all those tickets. Commissioner, actually, when it first came, we were both in contact with, I was in contact with Rockville Center quickly, and he was in contact with two of the cities that offer it. Glencov offers it. Long Beach and Glencov, I think, do it through their police departments directly. So he spoke to them at that time. He is an excellent resource on it as well. So it may be something to, for all of us to speak with him about it also.
I, you know, the whole idea about thinking about fraud presupposes that the residents here will abuse it, which I don't really see our population being in such a predisposition. But there is also the other factor that, candidly, myself included, Garden City is an older community and probably has a higher need for handicapped parking spaces. So I think, granted that we do need more information, both from the state as well as the utility, and the question, of course, which is most germane, is how many does the county actually turn down? Is, in my mind, a very important question to have answered. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know how many they turn down. I will follow up with that. I do know he mentioned he's had several doctors arrested.
So I think this has been a good discussion. And we'll look more into it. I guess one thing I'd also want to know is if we were to do it and decide in three years that we didn't want to do it anymore, would there, how difficult would it be to give it back to the county? Would that be any? So, all right, thanks for looking into that, Mrs. Galanek. Anything else on that? Okay. All right. Do we have any citizen comments on non-agenda items? Mr. Welton?
Upgrade. We have almost everything set. It's pretty, pretty self-explanatory. So part of me is a mirror and a reflection. I'm giving you what's given to me, and I'm giving it back to you. When I met with Trustee Finneran the other day, he said, John, we have to have uniformity and conformity on Seventh Street. So I took the time to walk again. So from Hilton Hall, excluding Four or Five Coffee, up to Pure Bar, we'll have nothing. It's either residential or businesses that don't need outside anything. From there, you go to Sweet Greens up to French Wake Shop. Go down the other end, we start at the office building on the corner. We come down, Taku has chairs. You go all the way up again. You're really going to go up to where, at some point, you know, that Tony Taco will be built, and certainly where the other organizations will build theirs out. So to answer your question, by the way, we left out Rebel when you said, we've only done these. Rebel obviously came to me in, in strength. And so when we look at it, and when we look at the code or study the code, one paper can supersede another paper. It's not affecting the vast majority of the actual physicality and geography of the street. It's a, it's a small number of, of physical square footage that we're talking about. And, and this goes to the cycle of what the village does. This is an order to remedy, but on the bottom, it says there's a fine. So the business community comes to me and says, John, we have a cycle. Every five years, three years, we can't have signs on the window. We can't have A-frames outside. And now we have to bring our chairs back. This is not the first cycle where chairs were told to be moved back against the building. We had, we had enforced it about seven years ago where we had to chain them, and they were conforming to chain them. They didn't have to move them back. They chained them up. So they're all questioning and reasoning as, as to why we're doing it. I didn't say the code was antiquated. I said the code has it in the code. Perhaps the code can be addressed. I did have people come up to me and say, hey, isn't there a plan to change the, they use the word code, not law, that we can't have non-compliant, meaning tattoo parlors, vape shops, or whatever the case may be. If that suits the village needs, why do we have to do, deal with this? That's their perception, whether it's right or wrong. I said to Trustee Finneran something very interesting. This is the This is the season when the, the, the organizations in the village, the charities, the men's association, the Friends of Music, the sports, they're all going in and they're all getting pieces of paper asking for donations. Our business community gets that in droves, sometimes two or three dozen a week. And they're very generous about it. But frequently, a document like this will be given to the day manager. Then the night manager comes on. The owner's not there. This goes in that pile of all those things. Sometimes they don't see it. Now, in this particular case, they're all aware of it because I spoke to every one of them. So they can't claim ignorance. They're aware of it and, and they're, 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 you know, perceived as, let's, let's try to do this. I think the idea of a moratorium should be explored. I looked at French Workshop. I looked at it objectively. I said, you know, in the city, they have the two baby carriage rule. They got to be able to go by. Actually, they use a three baby carriage to go by. You go to Biche on 56th Street and 5th Avenue, it's, it's this wide, okay? But our sidewalks luckily are pretty wide. And they all say the same thing. John, these planters weigh 400 pounds, 300 pounds. It's just, it's just impossible for us to move them. So I think if, if we look at, and, and I'm saying this again, it's a reflection. I'm giving you what I've been told. They're saying, well, it's anti-business. And I said, that is not the board's intention. That's not the village's intention. But that's what they're articulating. So I think we should take that into consideration as a community. It's there. I, I looked at it. I said to Ed, oh, sorry, trustee Fineran, I said, you know, tell me what's wrong with this. It, it doesn't look that bad. I don't see danger. So I think it should be reviewed and it's a, it's a hot issue amongst the businesses. And I think it's something that it has, I have gotten no feedback through the chamber from the citizens yet about it because it's, it's not yet out to the, the citizenry as, as we know. So I think it's something very, very significant that we should address and maybe we should. Because their idea is, look, the government comes, three years ago was we couldn't have A-frames. Five years ago was we couldn't have anything on the windows. Six years ago, whatever it might have been, we had to move things. So the perception is our government comes, they say, here, please do this. If you don't, we're going to fine you. Not a warm fuzzy feeling from the business community. Easter car parade, very interesting. I don't think you realize it, but we get people from Connecticut, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Suffolk, Nassau, Westchester, Huttonham. So interestingly enough, it really is a very, it's almost like the Jay Gallagher tour. We have people coming from all over to the, to the area. So it's a very good thing for branding, for the mechanism, for the village. We have the snowflakes up on Franklin Avenue, our six-foot banners. We probably should get, get on taking them down. It's the season to start taking them down. And that's really it. I'm looking forward to the Easter car parade, play, pray for good weather. We're getting in all the recipients that, that are putting on the paperwork to get it done. Our insurance, our things, our printing, it's all being done as we speak. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wilton. Yes.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me the second opportunity. I'm going to start with the pledge of allegiance. One nation under God. God is words in the book. So our allegiance is being pledged to whoever wrote the book. And it's ridiculous. Christians are sinners? That's nonsense. Christians have to love everybody? That's nonsense. I go on forever. Everything about the Christian religion is ridiculous. So when you say one nation under God, that's why we're having the problems. Because our, our, our basis is flawed, okay? Second, you commented about fallen soldiers, okay? Our, our military is a joke. Look at the open border, okay? It's ridiculous. All our military does is they're stationed in places like Syria where the multinational corporations are stealing the oil, okay? That's what our military does. These are the soldiers that are in harm's way. These are the soldiers that are getting attacked because they're protecting the corporations who are stealing the resources of these sovereign nations, okay? So anyway, you can see I'm a little outspoken. Mayor, did you get a chance to review my January letter to you and my February letter to Mr. Swazi? Did you get those letters?
Is there any times up?
Yeah.
No, no.
Okay.
Did you get a chance to review those letters?
I do not have your letters.
You do or do not?
Do not.
You do not have my letters, huh? That's interesting because when I address the letters to you specifically at this address, 351 Stewart Avenue, how is it that you don't receive them?
All right, that's enough. It's improper under the Board of Trustees' rules to address comments to a specific member of the board. If you have a comment about a village matter, make it, but make it to the entire board.
All right, well, it's, um, okay, well, um, well, my, my case, my position is explained in these letters. Can I ask Mr. Swazi if he received, is that okay? Did he receive my package to him?
I received your letter on, I think, Tuesday this week. It's on my desk. I've not reviewed it yet, but I'm sorry.
Okay, well, gee whiz. There was a, I wasn't involved in a criminal matter. The alleged incident was impossible, okay? There was no investigation, okay? And when I do get embroiled, the criminal justice system and the mental health system go after me with a vengeance. I mean, a real, real vengeance. Because again, I'm outspoken about various matters like Christianity or the military, whatever. And this is their opportunity to silence me. The, the matter lasted a year and five months, which was an extended nightmare where like every day I'm having to fight back. It's going to be life or death. How do, how do I get, how do I get this in? The, the complainant has enormous clout. Plus he has reason to do me harm. I mean, that's, that's, that's crazy that you didn't get my correspondence. I mean, how, how do, do I have to hand deliver it to you? Because it's a matter of, that you should be aware of.
Mr. Andrew, just excuse me for, for one sec. You're coming up on your four minutes. These matters are more of a personal nature and maybe I would imagine, excuse me, excuse me, just let me finish. Imagine you may have counsel with regard to your criminal matter. And as trustee Kelly said, you should limit your remarks to village issues if you can.
Village that arrested me. It was the village that arrested me. And I did have counsel. I had five attorneys, 10 judges, 25 court appearances. I was scheduled, I was ordered to take a mental health exam, but nobody knows why. And when I refused to take it, I was remanded to jail. They put me right in a loony bin. And the ADA, she wanted to.
Mr. Andrew, these are not matters that, that the board considers. They certainly are germane to village justices who you may, or I don't know if that's who you are before, but I would suggest that, that you take it up into that forum. And you have, I'm sorry, sir, sir, I'm sorry.
Case has been dismissed.
You have 10 seconds.
Case has been dismissed.
Oh, it has, okay.
Yeah.
So that's good news.
Well, in, in my letters, I was requesting that I get some, some reparation, restitution for what I was put through. Again, the complaint was impossible. There was no investigation. And it's got to be some, some accountability.
Sounds, sir, like you have put this all in writing and it's likely in hands of counsel, but I'll make sure it is.
It's, what, Mr. Fishberg has it?
It will be. If it's not already, I'll see that it gets in the proper hands, but.
Is it in like, is it in limbo? Like, who has it? Where, where is it?
Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that and get back to you.
Well, thank, that would be nice. I'd like that all the time. It'll be right back. I don't know if Mr. Jackson got it.
Mr. Alardi.
Thank you. Steve Alardi isn't still on Meadow Street. There's a bench at the corner of Clinton and Meadow that's on the southeast corner. It's like an old park-style bench. It's like the cement legs and two-by-four slats making the bench. The slat towards your knees is missing. The cement is broken. The rebar is showing. So I know there's an elderly resident in my area of town that walks and takes a break on that bench every day. There's some home health aides that wait on that bench for their bus. So I'm hoping the village could maybe replace that because it doesn't look like it could be repaired. You know, the item I'd like to bring up from a resident on the corner of Clinton and Willow has been in touch with me. I know he emailed the village. I also emailed John Barone, who's very quick to get back to me. The gas main work on Clinton, it's, I don't think it's as much the patchwork that they've done on the north-south in the right-hand lane. But there at Pine and Willow, they went across the street, completely across all four lanes of Clinton. And that patch has sunk and the trucks, buses and cars make loud noises going over it. And this particular resident told me he hasn't slept for two weeks. The house shakes. There's been a few residents in that area that I think has contacted the village about it. And I know it's National Grid and I know they do a temporary patch until the work is all done and they come back and do a permanent patch. But perhaps something can be done with those patches that are running across the entire roadway. The handicap parking you spoke about, I, I've done that twice for my mother. The pass lasts for about three years. It's a simple form to fill out. You can actually do it online or you can mail it to the building over there on, near the hub. It's a simple process. The doctor has to fill out some of the paperwork, which I don't think would change. I think the village should really look hard before they take on something that seems to work very well. I had to renew it a few months ago. I was in Florida. They needed the power of attorney from me because I was filling out the form for my mother. I emailed it to them. The time I got home, I had the new pass in my mailbox. It's really simple. Before you get too deep into it, I think you really should. One of the things I think the county has really done well that I've been involved with. The last thing, I, I know in two weeks you have a traffic meeting, but I'd like to mention it today. By the middle school, when you're on Cherry Valley and you make the right onto Stewart, or if you're on Rockaway and you make the left onto Stewart, there are no 20 mile an hour speed signs on that block adjacent to the middle school building. So anyone who makes the right or the left really wouldn't think or know that the speed limit is 20 miles an hour there. You do have the sign on Cherry Valley. People could think it's for you going straight. There's a sign further up Stewart by the playing fields for the people coming east. But if you make the left off of Rockaway, there's no sign. And if you make the right off of Stewart, there's no sign. So if you had a 20 mile an hour school sign on both sides of the street there, I think at least people couldn't say there was no sign. I, I know it's probably a very tough area for the police to enforce right there. But there is no sign for the 20 miles an hour. So I think it's something maybe the Traffic Commission can look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I respond to Mr. Alardi's other comments?
Sure.
So the signs would be the preview of the Traffic Commission, so I'll do that to trustee Kelly, chairman Kelly. As far as the, the bench on the corner of Clinton Meadow, down there often, especially recently with the work going on there and the work we plan there. I did call Mr. Blake. He did have the bench repaired. Now, less than 24 hours later, it was busted again. My ultimate goal was to replace it. It was one of the nicer benches like we have on Seventh Street. But I didn't feel spending $2,000 or $3,000 on a bench that's going to be busted was a wise investment. Although I'm still willing to try it. We do have a couple of benches on Seventh Street that need to be moved. They're on the property of a new business and I don't think there's room on, in front of them. So we would have to buy a new one and it might be tough at a break. I would like to replace that bench. It is damaged. So I think we can handle that. As far as the work on Clinton, Mr. Ryan and Mr. Schumacher and all the people on there, very long email, sent an email out yesterday. I immediately forwarded to Ken Arnold, Nassau County Commissioner of Public Works. He responded that he would have the patches reviewed. And, and they would get back to us simultaneously. While I was doing that, Mr. Barone sent the email to the National Grid managers out there. And he said he would have the patches investigated. So I think that's occurring already. And you had, as far as the, the handicap permits, Ms. Galenek didn't mention it, but in my conversation with her on the matter, one of the things that people sometimes hear when they go to that office is that it could take up to two weeks. But they really turn those things around at 24, 48 hours. Am I correct, Kelly? So, so sometimes I think that they get that information. They think it's a much more extensive process.
I don't think you have to go there in person.
No, you probably don't. But I'm just saying those people have heard that and.
No, I understand.
If you call one day, you get one answer. You call another day, you might get a different answer. Depends on how you answer the phone, so. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room with a comment on a non-agenda item? Anyone on Zoom with a comment on a non-agenda item?
Hi, this is Kathy O'Hara from Hilton Hall. Can you hear me?
Hi. Yes, we can. Hi.
I'll make it quick. First, I want to say thank you to all the trustees for everything you do. I appreciate, I, no, there's a lot of us that don't say it enough, but definitely appreciate everything that you do. The other thing I want to mention is about, about the Seventh Street Cafe and the, and the chairs. I have to say, it looks terrible at night when you see those chairs tied up against the, the building. And it's not the look I know that we want for Garden City. So I'm all for, and I think once residents hear about the, the request to take the chairs and move them up and lock them up against the buildings, you're going to have a lot of complaints. You know, as Mr. Wil, Mr. Wilton said, residents haven't seen this or heard about the, the chairs. But I saw last night what happened with, what's there for Seventh Street Cafe and it looks terrible. I just want to put that out there. And then the other thing I just want to add to about the handicap permits, they're really easy to get. I don't, I know I, I helped my mother get hers and it's not a big deal. And it's something I don't think the village should take on. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom on non-agenda items? All right, there being.
Superintendent Barone, if you can take a look at the, Mr. Alardi's request for signage in that area near the middle school and then just email me and we can talk about it.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion.
I second it.
All in favor? Motion is adjourned. Good evening. Thanks for coming.